I think we used to have.
I just.
But come up and we'll have some chairs there.
I said to our tall secretary director the same thing about. And he thought that he thought. The person making it look. No, no, no. Let me clarify.
Honestly, this last time, I was like. I could've stayed.
Ricky's a trip.
She. Danny, are we on? No? Okay. Okay. Just let us know when we're on. So we're.
We're having many. We're having many are not made for TV conversations.
And before we start, guys, I do want for y'all who just came in, Teresa Portwood is with us tonight. She is working on her Level Five Board status with Anderson County Schools. And so she's going to be evaluating us tonight.
She is my favorite Anderson County School Board member.
She's my favorite one, too. And my daughter's over there, so that's saying a lot.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve our agenda as presented. Does anybody have any additions or deletions to our agenda for tonight? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our financial report for January with Mr. Ray.
Everybody should have in their board packets the January financial statements. Nothing exciting to report, as I say, sometimes boring is good when it comes to finance and government. I guess property tax collections are starting to hit, and that's why we're at forty-nine percent. So we look for your revenues to be about fifty percent this time. On the expenditure side, this is where we start seeing some of your revenues exceed expenditures in total for GP fund. And then that trend will start reversing back to break even as we approach June thirtieth. Federal projects funds, we are one hundred and sixty-seven thousand expenditures in excess of revenues. Again, that's just a timing issue with reimbursement grants. If you if you look at January, we spent one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in January. If that's an average, then the one hundred and sixty-seven in excess is a little bit above our monthly average, which to me means we're more than thirty days in arrears, and I like to keep it at about thirty days. So we need to work on that a little bit. I'd like to get my money as fast, or the school's money, as fast as we can from the government.
We know how you think about it.
It's, yes. Last, the school nutrition program, we're still at a surplus, which is good. I anticipate us finishing strong. Right now, we're at a fifty-four thousand dollar surplus. That's a little over a month's of breakfast and lunch expense. So we do have some cushion if we ever had a hiccup. But I do, I anticipate us ending the year between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars in the surplus, depending on what kind of equipment we have to get into from now until the end of the year. Nothing's on my radar right now. So it'd be my recommendation that you approve the January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three financial statements.
All right, we have a recommendation to approve our January statement as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray regarding our January financial report? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
KK Meredith?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Babel?
Yes.
Merle Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to budget amendment number four.
You should have a memo that summarizes budget amendment number four in your packet. General Purpose School Fund, moving appropriations between line items, really within facilities. So we are increasing some facility line items by one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, and I am decreasing other facility line items by one hundred and seventy-five thousand. The twenty-four thousand dollar difference is being covered by an increase in revenue. Basically, what we're doing is we're incurring less HVAC expense than I anticipated. But we are incurring a little bit more for our security and cameras and FOB, and we are incurring a little bit more for custodial supplies. An example of that is the cost of our trash bags.
I knew that was going to be the one.
The trash bag has gone up thirty to forty percent. So I've instructed them to, if it's dry, empty the trash, leave the bag.
And how much does each trash bag cost?
Watch your pennies, and the dollars will follow, you know, I say. But that gives you, you can pray for that. Everybody else has to deal with me. But. That's pretty much no recommended budget amendment in federal projects or the Cafeteria Fund at this time. Any questions on budget amendment number four, Joey?
None.
Would you like to have a donation for trash bags?
That'd be a good idea. A trash bag fundraiser.
Any further?
Make you proud.
Any further questions or comments?
So we got key fobs everywhere now? Is that right?
No, we, Central Office now, we're working on the RFP. The RFP should be in the paper on Wednesday. And so then it'll be advertised for two weeks, and we'll start that process. I think we've got right now, Scott's finalizing my work on the RFP to make sure that I met his, met his expectations. But I think we have it scheduled to where it would close by the end of April, and then we would get moving on doing all three schools at the same time.
Any further questions for Mr. Ray? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve budget amendment number four as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
KK Meredith?
Yes.
Lori Wilson?
Yes.
Tim Babel?
Yes.
Merle Price?
Yes.
Joey Smith?
Yes.
Curtis Isbell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to new business requiring action by the board. We've got two policies that we need to update on first and second reading.
So these are the latest policy updates that TSBA has sent our way, and both of them actually apply to each one of you. But they are the Code of Ethics and the Board Member Conflict of Interest Policies. No significant, no significant changes on, I mean, obviously, we meet all of those, all of those requirements, but they did add a few, a few things in there just to get it in compliance with the latest, the latest laws. So those need your approval tonight.
Any discussion or comments regarding the two policies that are presented? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the policies as presented on first and second reading.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our textbook adoption.
So this was the year for math textbook adoption. Next year, there will be new state standards that go into place for math, and also it's time for us to look at an updated math textbook that will match the new current standards. So Lori Collins has actually led the work with this with the help of the principals. We've been working on it basically all year long, but we formed teacher groups at each school who served on the textbook committee. And we looked at, we narrowed down what the state had approved to the top two, I believe. We started with four and quickly were able to narrow it down to two. We took a real different approach this time with trying to choose, knowing that the standards are changing. Instead of looking at the resources and kind of the fluff that comes with it, we took standards and then we did a deep analysis of if the textbooks matched, matched the rigor of the standards that we would be required to implement. Because our goal in this is to get a textbook that is closely aligned with the standards to where teachers are having to work harder to find resources to meet the standards. So we did analyze deeply two of those. It was HMH and then iReady Classroom. iReady is what we are using right now. This is an updated textbook from them that is called Classroom, and that is where the teachers and the, and the working group landed. Instead of voting on which one you wanted, we created a rubric, and they graded each one of those in several different areas. And then we did analysis of the rubric results. And so we will actually be purchasing that out of this year's money so that we will have it in time for teachers to become familiar with that over the summer prior to next school year. So that does require board approval before we're able to purchase those textbooks.
Is that for every grade?
For every grade.
So if it's iReady, is it a physical book?
It will be a physical book. So iReady, iReady is kind of a suite of things that we use. They have a menu of different items. And so we, we will use their textbook, but that will be, it's different than the benchmarks that we use, the three tests that we take a year. And then there's also an online instruction component for students that's different. And then there is a tools for teachers that has lesson plans. Those are four different, like suite, or things that we can choose from the menu. But no, this will be a, will be, it would be a disposable textbook. You're seeing more companies move towards, instead of the hardback that we keep for six years, they're going ahead and giving them the student workbook to where they can write in it, and it's a consumable. And then they'll just provide, we'll do the six years, and then they'll provide those consumables each year.
I like the consumables.
Except that you send them home, and then I gotta do something with them.
That is true. That is true.
You know, it's always either ditto sheets or like a, because that makes more sense.
Mm-hmm.
For sure.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments for Kelly regarding the textbook adoption? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our textbook adoption as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a, in a slow second? Any further questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to reports and information, reports from principals and supervisors.
Ms. Sharp had her read day today, so we'll let her start with Clinton Elementary School.
Can we start by welcoming her back and hope you're good health?
Good. Good.
Bye. Appreciate your support here in that as well. But we did have our read day today. We had to reschedule it from last week. And we had a lot of visitors. We had virtual readers. We had student ambassadors that read to other classes. And we had Mason Farley, who is the fairest of the fair. She came to read to the students. And it was so sweet. She did such a wonderful job. Also, we had Mr. Cases. He had Ms. Rich's class in first grade. They did a little performance. And, you know, since COVID, we've had virtual assemblies. And the past two that we've done in the gym, they have been so well behaved. So I think that's going to be our new norm, and it's probably past time for that, but they've proven they're ready. So, but read day was great. We would also like to thank Aramark and Laura Roberts and Harper Petersak. We had school-wide breakfast the last two days where the students came in and they got a special breakfast, a different breakfast, where they could kind of choose their toppings on waffles and parfaits. And it was a little busy, which was a great thing. But the students loved it, and I know that they worked really hard to get that together. So we appreciate them. We want to say thank you to the City Public Works Department for cleaning out our Lee Ausley Nature Center. I know Joey had worked on that some as well, but they did a phenomenal job. It looks really nice, and I think it'll grow back and look good for the kids. I know in May they start to go out there a little bit more, so it looks nice. But thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Ms. Monica?
So in addition to our school breakfast week as well, and we had our read day on March second, we opened the day with a special presentation of Please, Mr. Panda, which was acted out by our School Resource Officer, Officer Mivell, and multiple teachers and staff as characters from the book. And then the book was about a panda with some donuts, so there were some donut treats to follow. Classes dressed as characters from the same book with multiple related activities, and many student readers came to other classes. We had nearly thirty outside guest readers, including parents, community members, board members, and a visit from a storyteller. So there were lots of dress-up days along with that throughout the entire week, and we culminated that on our Thursday read day. We have in PLCs, we've been focusing on analyzing standards. And we've met with Keely Potter from NIET, and we plan for providing some more guidance for reflection for teachers, especially in regard to student work with the standards. So we're excited about staying in that same pathway with focusing on the standards and focusing on how that is affecting our student work. We do have spring pictures and sixth grade cap and gown pictures coming up at the end of March the thirty-first.
So they've already said a lot of it for me, but just to recap some things that have happened at South Clinton, we did our calendar fundraiser in the month of February, and we raised over twelve thousand dollars, which is a really big fundraiser for South Clinton Elementary. So we were really excited about that. So we talked about it at staff meeting yesterday, and we want to plan some kind of family, community event in the spring to invite all of our families to come and have dinner with us and just thank them for their support this year, because our parents have really shown up for us at South Clinton, and we just want to tell them thank you and that they're appreciate, we appreciate them. We had parent conferences tonight from three o'clock to five o'clock, and that, we are just so glad to be doing those in person again, because it was hard during COVID. So we're glad to have parents in the building for that again. Our school is continuing to work toward STEM designation. So Lori Erwin attended a training at Northview School that is a STEM school, and she just came back with all kinds of exciting things to show me. And we got really excited about some of the things that we want to implement at South Clinton. So we're having a planning meeting tomorrow during our collaborative day to talk about some of the things that we can start doing to work towards that designation, and we're excited about that. Our read day was Monday, so I want to say a big thank you to Holly Webb and Lauren Neal, because they had to quickly reschedule everything when we found out that we had an inclement weather day on Friday. And they did a great job of pulling it together, rescheduling all of our readers. We had a great day, and it was really neat to see lots of our former students from South Clinton come back to be readers on Monday. In PLCs, we are also working on deconstructing standards in math. So Maria and I met with all the teachers on Tuesday, and we worked through the Tennessee Instructional Focus Document to really look at our math standards and make sure that we are addressing rigor in all areas. Thank you.
And that concludes.
Concludes our principal's words.
Look over the items for information there. One that I do want to point out is the Summer Law Institute. It will be coming up, if you can mark your calendars, for July the twentieth and the twenty-second. And Kim, you'll probably be reaching out to us to see who will be attending. That concludes reports and information. We'll move on to our director's report.
Couple of Clinton City updates for you all. First, today actually marks the end of our third nine weeks of school. Tomorrow will be an in-service day for teachers, and then spring break is next week. So as we were sitting up here, I looked at KK and said, I can't believe that like we're actually talking that this is March. So the last nine weeks, as you know, will be Fast and Furious as we are winding down the school year, but also already preparing for next school year. After spring break, student registration forms are going to go out with all Clinton City students, and we'll start the process of trying to get our enrollment numbers and planning for next year. As you know, we have changed the way that we are doing student registration this year with kindergarten. So our city students' kindergarten registration is going to be at South Clinton on March twenty-seventh, North Clinton on March twenty-eighth, and Clinton Elementary on March the thirtieth. So right now, parents are calling Central Office and scheduling a time to come to those schools during that day to register their students. And you'll see some more social media shout-outs come out as we try to get as many students in the city to come out for this so that we can kind of see our numbers. And then our annual transfer period for out-of-city residents will be from April the third to May fifteenth. And so any parent that is interested in applying for a new transfer will get the transfer application between that period of time, and then we will be notifying parents by the first of June if we have space available for them. And then there will be a separate registration date in June for transfer parents to come and register. So we're hopeful that this just provides a little bit more clear-cut deadlines, and also the fact that we're going to be able to let transfer parents know in June versus right before school starts, I think will be, will be very helpful. And so we, we will see how that plays out this year and see if that's something that we want to keep in subsequent years. I do have some good news that I want to share with you. As you know, Clinton City Schools has been working with NIET for the past two years, the National Institute of Excellence in Teaching. And they are actually the ones who created the team rubric, which is what we use for all of our teacher evaluations. But they're well-known nationally for just having a leadership role in education and improving instruction. And it has probably been one of the best things that we have done as far as continuous improvement and for leadership professional development that we've ever done in Clinton City Schools. The work that we do at the district level to try to create cohesiveness in the message that we are sending to, to teachers, knowing that they are the single most important factor, and then that filtering down to the students for student ownership and academic success has been really neat to watch as we're developing common vocabulary. We're all developing a better understanding of the standards and rigor and expectations. And we kind of just do things the Clinton City way. We do it, it's the way that we do it, and we don't really see it as anything special, but NIET does. And so they actually invited our leadership team to come to their national conference, and we are going to participate in a bubble session where we will actually conduct one of our weekly, we call it a DILT, because we always have an acronym and everything in education, but it's our District Instructional Leadership Team. And we will actually conduct one of our meetings in a bubble session with participants watching, and we will do certain sections of that. And then NIET is going to step out and call out different collaborative strategies and, and just the way that, the way that we do business and how we use productive conflict to move us forward. And it's funny that the one that they are choosing for us to present, there's quite a bit of conflict, wasn't there, guys? But good conflict is always professional conflict as we try to push our thinking to, to continuous improvement. So we're super excited to be able to share what we're doing in Clinton City Schools at that national conference. It is going to be in Indianapolis. So we were probably going to be taking our picture by Peyton's statue. And it will be on social media. So also, we have some great news to share regarding the administration of our WEDA testing. So WEDA is a test that we give to all of our English Language Learner students. It's a required state testing. And as you know, we have one ELL teacher, Haley Wells. And, you know, we have significantly seen our ELL population rise over the past year. And so they are completing the WEDA. It's a one-on-one assessment, and they're graded in several areas, speaking, listening, writing, reading. And, you know, as you know, a lot of the students that we got last year, this was their first year in our country, and many of them are completely non, non-English speaking. And it has been amazing to see those results roll in, because we know immediately the results of when they take it. And the majority of our students have skipped several levels in one year that they have been with us. And so that is kudos to Haley Wells. She just was a gift to us, and we are so blessed to be able to have her. Her passion for ELL students is just simply amazing. And watching them thrive is just, they are just some of the best kids, and they have really blessed our system. So a little update on our Clinton Elementary playground and parking is we should have the final specs. Scott has been working with Erin, our architect, and the Playground Specialist. We met with them on President's Day, her, and she is working up a mock playground of what we could do. We did decide on the lower parking lot, because after we looked and we, they did some investigating, we can really, that is a very accessible, crazy as it seems, it's a very accessible place, because they can come out the door, and the ramp is already ADA compliant. So there will be very little work that we have to do to get that ADA compliant. And then we thought that it would be an issue with the asphalt, but the Playground Specialist, help me remember her name, is it Julia?
Close, Tammy.
Tammy. Tammy. And he's laughing because he knows I'm terrible with names. He knows that I'm terrible. So Tammy, otherwise known as Julia. And you are laughing because I've made this mistake up here before. She said, actually, it is a really good thing that it is on asphalt, because we won't have to tear up the asphalt. We will be able to put the soft landing on top of the asphalt. And she says, actually, there will be no prep. And so, exactly. So she was tickled. And so that made, of course, Scott saw saving of money signs, and so he was all happy about that. But anyway, we should have.
Scoring bags for everybody.
Exactly. Exactly. Everybody's going to be able to get. So, so anyway, we, we are going to have more information on that. We are, because we're going to lose the parking there in the lower lot. We will be, we will be looking at the property that we have on Marshall Street. We're going to be adding additional parking there to make up for the parking that we lose in the lower, in the lower parking lot.
That be where the, the house is located, or will that be up where they've already put in field dirt, where the, the?
Where we're, we have a trailer and a truck parked there now, a little gravel. There was a house, small house, Mr. Smith's house, maybe? We tore that one down. Right next to the parking lot.
Okay. So it's not going to be over where the, the other house is that we, to the, to the right?
Correct. We are hoping, we'll have to weigh, we've got to, we'll have to do some surveying to see about storm drainage. The, the hope is, is that we can just expand the Wiggles and Giggles parking lot and move it closer and just get, he says that we could, should be able to get even more spots there. We just have to survey the land to see if that is, is doable.
You don't have to jump over the storm drain. If you arrive a little later, you might have to jump over the storm drain. Exactly.
So funny story about the Wiggles and Giggles parking lot, because that's what we've always called it. And so our contractor that's working with us on this and the architect, of course, they, and so we just, the Wiggles and Giggles parking lot. And finally, he was like, can I just please ask you why you keep calling it the Wiggles and Giggles parking lot? It's like, well, there used to be a building there that's called the Wiggles and Giggles. So, so anyway, more, we're rocking on that as fast as, as we can rock. And then while we had the Playground Specialist, Tammy, while we had her with us, she also went to North Clinton, and we were able to survey North Clinton. And we've given Monica the catalogs to work with her team at North Clinton to determine what pieces we want to use there with the fifty-dollar, fifty thousand dollar donation we have gotten from Clinton Rotary Club and Mark Trout. So then, as I told you earlier, our Vigilon FOB Access Control System, that RFP should be advertised next week, so we hope to get moving on that as fast as possible. A little fun legislative updates for you from Nashville is that they were supposed to hear all the third-grade retention laws this week. It is our understanding that Chairman Mark White in the Education House Committee has, he's going to file something that tries to capture the essence of what most of the sixteen bills are doing, but they're going to hold another special hearing on third-grade retention next Tuesday. So that was postponed for a week. And then the funding for our pre-K through Rising Seventh Grade Summer School is moving steadily through the committees with little to no pushback, so we feel pretty confident that that will be funded for us again this year. We have been told that there could possibly be a ten percent decrease in that funding, but we will, we will be fine with a ten percent decrease. And then just a couple of more updates that are not on your, not on your form, just to remind everyone that we did apply to the State Department for, since we haven't used, but we've only, we've only used one of our inclement weather days this year. I applied to take one of those inclement weather days that we've not used to add another professional development day, and that's gonna be on May the 5th. And we have secured curriculum associates to come and do teacher training on that day on our new math textbooks. The thinking on that is that way they have the teacher's addition, they receive the first day of training prior to leaving for the summer. The absolute worst time to do any teacher training on any sort of instructional materials is when they come back in August and they're trying to get their classrooms ready. It's just too, there, that, that is one of the most overwhelming times for teachers, so we're hoping to capitalize on this day to do that. And then we will take, I will be bringing this as an official vote next month to you all, but I do want to let you know publicly that we are looking at our enrollment at North Clinton Elementary, and we have done an analysis of the enrollment for our sixth-grade program there since 2017. We are not maintaining enough student enrollment at this time to justify keeping a sixth-grade class at North Clinton. So the plan is, the plan is, is I will come to you next month and ask for approval to, to obviously encourage our kids to stay with us for sixth grade, but we would, we would open up spots for them at Clinton Elementary where they could attend at Clinton Elementary, and then Clinton City Schools would provide transportation for those Clinton, North Clinton students to where the parents could continue to drop them off at North Clinton, and we would transport them to Clinton Elementary for the school day, and then back to North Clinton to their base school at the end of the day. What we are seeing right now, as we have surveyed parents, is only four of our North Clinton zoned students. Seven altogether at this point plan to stay with us, and three of those are zone exceptions and transfer students. So right now, that would only be four North Clinton students. And so we certainly want them to continue to stay with us in Clinton City for sixth grade, and we will certainly provide them quality, a quality sixth-grade program with transportation. But I did talk extensively with Merle and, because she kind of has the historical context of North Clinton. So Merle, do you have anything, just, I mean, you had previously said that, that that was, that other years we have not had a sixth grade there.
Several years where we've not had a sixth grade up there. And what it boils down to, in my opinion, is not necessarily what you kind of like, it's financially, we have to do it. And I love facts, because that just takes care of it.
Yep, yeah. So she actually did it, she texted me the other day a historical perspective, and there's been several years. And so I don't think we go in and, I don't think we say that, that, you know, we won't ever have a sixth grade at North Clinton again. I think we analyze it on a year-by-year basis, and if we have, if we have enough to make a class, but.
What about the sixth-grade teacher at North Clinton?
Actually, with our fourth-grade teacher that resigned. That sixth-grade teacher went to fourth grade to fulfill that. And then, so we pulled our first-grade teacher to sixth grade. And so it would, by natural attrition, Ms. Smithson would stay in fourth grade, and then that sixth-grade teacher goes back to her first-grade position where we'll need two first grades next year. So it would just be not a matter of hiring. Now, what I would do with that position is I would move that position to Clinton Elementary, because we're on the verge right now, the majority of our Clinton Elementary kids are staying. And so I'm, I really am close to that needing four teachers. So we'll take that position, move it to Clinton Elementary for next year, and then that would help absorb the North Clinton kids that come there. So I will, I plan to, to bring that and put that on the agenda, but I just wanted to put that on your, on your radar. And that concludes my report, any questions for me?
No further questions or comments for Ms. Kelly? All right, hearing none, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Teresa Portwood.